This is the May 29 meeting of the Transportation Advisory Board. My name's Nina Milligan, I'm the Vice Chair, sitting in for Chairman A.J. McGauley, who's unable to join us this evening. But we have a full evening of presentations from the staff tonight, and we'll have a couple more members coming in, but we thought we'd better get started. First, I'm calling the meeting to order now at 6:09. And our first order of business might have been minutes, but we don't have any minutes to review this evening. I'll just give you a heads up that we'll have two minutes to review and approve next time we meet. And then the next item on our agenda is public comments. And I wonder if there's anybody saying public comments? No public comments this evening, so we can go straight into our agenda items, the first of which is the Master Mobility Plan update, and the second is the policy updates. And at this time, I'll turn it over to our staff from Public Works, Stephen Padua. Thank you, Stephen.
Hi. How's everybody doing?
Good.
Get my presentation up. There it is. That's not it. There it is. All right. Can everybody hear me all right now?
Yes, it's awesome.
All right. So tonight, I'm going to give an update on the Mobility and Master Plan, and talk about all the steps that we've been taking to move the project forward, but also talk about some of the outreach that we've been conducting in the month of May, and then also some of the engagement that we're having with staff. Because not only is this a big process with the community, but it's also a big process with staff to educate staff on new issues related to transportation, but also how staff can better coordinate on big projects. And just as a quick reminder, the purpose of the Mobility and Master Plan is to create a long-range planning document that consolidates all of the city's policies related to transportation to give clear guidance to staff, but also the community on how we want to shape the transportation system for future city. And in terms of our schedule, you have the schedules in front of you, but we are kind of in that transition phase between the second and third phase of this project where we are talking about the guiding principles and the priorities for transportation, and now looking at how to look at policies, programs, and projects, and defining how the city should reshape the transportation system. So as you can see, we've done a lot in the month of May. We hit up both of the big transit centers. We talked to a lot of the transit riders as they're rushing for the bus or waiting for the bus, and handed out flyers to each of them, in hopes of actually getting them to fill out the survey online as they're either waiting for the bus or on the bus. And we found actually big spikes, probably 50, 60 people after every attendance of each of the transit centers, which is pretty good. At each of them, we handed probably close to 150 flyers, but that's actually a good return when you're considering all the people that are just tossing the flyers once they get to work. We also went to the farmer's market, which is the top-right picture, is we went and handed out flyers and had people fill out a big poster board with the activity sheet with a lot of those same questions that are on the online survey, and talked to people about a lot of the major projects, as well as what this plan does for the city. And one of the interesting things that staff would probably summarize around that event is the majority of the people that we talked to didn't live in the city of Issaquah. Most of them were Sammamish residents that were going to the Issaquah farmer's market, which was, we thought was actually really interesting. And that was actually consistent with a lot of the events that we attended on this list. A lot of the people are coming from other cities to Issaquah for a lot of the resources that are in the city. And I think that's going to be an important aspect or element that we'll need to consider as we're putting this plan together. This morning, went to the Food and Clothing Bank and talked to people, handed out the survey. A few weeks ago, we went to the kids' rodeo and spoke to families about how they feel riding bikes or walking in the city. And a lot of the feedback that we got from the families was they just don't feel safe going beyond their own neighborhood. And so they feel disconnected from the rest of the city, and they feel forced to actually drive their cars. And then we've connected with a lot of different community groups. We've sent out email blasts about the survey and the work that we're doing. And then we've also been posting on social media with a lot of these events that we've been going to, to let people know that we're going to be there, but also they can come talk to us if they're available. And then another event that we went to was there's an English-as-a-second-language class up in the Highlands that we went and spoke to a lot of the students in that class about issues they have with being able to travel within Issaquah. And we learned very similar aspects as the farmer's market. The majority of the people in the class actually were Sammamish residents. They were coming down to Issaquah because they couldn't get the same resources in their And from this online survey itself, one of the big things that we're learning is the three top principles that people are supporting is improve mobility within Issaquah, prepare for growth, and better connect Issaquah with the region, with closely behind promote environmental sustainable model for transportation. And then the biggest issues that people experience with the transportation system is there aren't enough options to get around, and the available options that they do have don't necessarily work because of where they work or where they live. And that is from everybody that staff has talked to, consistent with all the feedback we've been hearing, not just from the survey itself. Couple of other things that kind of highlighted from the online survey is about 30% of the people that have filled out the survey live outside of Issaquah. 55% of the people who filled out the survey work outside of Issaquah. And on the other end, 17% work in Issaquah. And so there's a big disparity of people who don't live and work in Issaquah that are actually giving feedback on transportation and expressing major issues with being able to get around. How we're going to be using the feedback is, one, the direct feedback to the guiding principles are going to help us create a ranking of the guiding principles, which will help our discussions later on, either next month or in July, when we start talking about project criteria, and also start talking about different performance metrics that we'll use to help gauge how we're doing down the line. And then the additional feedback that we will receive will also help our transition to the next phase, which is looking at the policies, projects, and programs. For example, a lot of the feedback that we're hearing is there's not enough transit options, and so the staff and the consultant are going to take a look at proposing policies or potential projects to either boost reliability and service of transit service, or work with King County Metro on new projects to bring additional transit services to the area. Are there any questions before I move on, on the engagement part? Okay. So on the staff end of things, we've had several workshops with consultant to work through some of the topics that were being addressed in the master plan. We also had several tours. We visited the city of Kirkland and met with some of their transportation staff to talk about major projects in the city of Kirkland, as well as how they're coordinating with their master plan, their version of the master plan, as well as coordinating with their land use development. Kirkland is, like a lot of the East Side cities, is one of the cities that are experiencing a huge amount of growth. And even with having policies and plans in place, they're still struggling to keep up. And so that's actually something that we're hearing from all the cities. When we met with the city of Redmond, and Nina, please, you were there, you can please add in your perspective from the tour, we talked with staff about all the plans that they use, and how consistent they've been able to do, or how consistent they've been able to stay with the plan, as well as make slight changes to the plan to fit how the community is adapting to the new transportation system. I don't know if you have anything else that you want to summarize from that.
Oh, well, there was so much that we learned, but I would like to share with the rest of the board how emphasized it was to get out in front of the forces that be around us, not the least being sound transit and light rail, and that we are on schedule, we're not, I believe, at all early, but we need to get this work done expediently so that we can let the rest of the region know what it is that is important to us, and that we have some independence in making those decisions now. And I was really grateful for that advice.
Yeah. One of the big takeaways from staff is that they, each of the cities have kind of established who they are in the transportation plans that they have. And throughout the years, they've been able to build a big support system with the community, as well as building regional partnerships to help support what their plan is planned for, and the type of system that they wanted to have established in the next 20, 30 years. And it's been helpful, but at the same time, they've still had to make changes to what their plans have identified 20 years ago. So for the next phase, we're going to be looking closely at policies, programs, and projects, and the way it'll work is staff is going to work with our consultant to look through every, the different elements of the transportation system, what's in our transportation element of the comprehensive plan, and look at new policies that align with the guiding principles. And what we'll do is we're going to bring a lot of those policies, programs, and projects to the tab at future meetings and talk through whether or not something needs to be changed, or if actually we're meeting the bill of what the guiding principles are calling for. And what we wanted to do is talk, there seems to be some confusion on the difference between a lot of things, and rightfully so. There's a lot of overlap between what policies, programs, and projects, and other items we will call standards and guidelines and plans, and the biggest thing, we just wanted to run through some examples, and then take any questions on the difference between a lot of them. For the example of policies, we have, let's say, a street trees policy. For specific corridors, you have to install a certain number of street trees a certain width apart. That is a policy. We also have a policy that we require when a corridor is built or rebuilt, that a sidewalk is established on one side of the street, or both sides of the street, depending on where the street is. That is a policy. A program example is we have a school pool program. That's a culmination of multiple different projects coming together of finding new ways for students to get to school. We also have the city's restriping program, where we go to different streets to maintain the markings on the roadway. For projects, it could be any size. When we talk about projects, it could be the newly redesigned Newport corridor project, or it could be a smaller restripe maintenance or curb update, so putting in a new curb ramp. When we're talking about guidelines, we don't always have policies or standards that fit every situation, so guidelines are usually established to have that flexibility of, well, when A is in place, you want to do X, Y, and Z. And so that is particularly what guidelines, the type of guidelines that we have, and how we use them. And then for standards, it's very specific of if you have a road, it needs to be this wide, and have these elements to it when you build it. And then for plans, it is really about putting together different elements of how do you achieve a certain vision and establishing that vision with the community. Are there any questions before we move on? One of the questions that Nina and A.J. wanted us to talk about is why we always have separate policies. And the reason for that is a lot of them need to be clear. And you can't have a policy on street trees and biofiltration systems all in one policy because it just gets a little jumbled up. And so that's the reason why we're going to be looking at policies very specifically and separately, and not as one giant policy. Now I'm going to go to policy project updates. And for this presentation, this one is going to, we're going to walk through what each of the policies are, and I'm hoping to get questions from you so we can talk through and address any confusion around, because they are a little confusing. And then Sheldon's going to help me give a little bit of history on each of the policies because he's been here longer than I have. So he can talk about more of how they've been used or not used, and probably help answer some of your questions. So three of the main policies that we're going to be also working on this year, parallel with the Mobility and Master Plan, is our complete streets policy, the crossing guidelines, and our traffic calming policy. These are three big policies that have been highlighted by staff in the past that need to be updated, and we wanted to get started on the Mobility and Master Plan process and establish those guiding principles before getting started on these policy updates. And in line with the schedule that you have, the idea is, it's a little flexible from what's in front of you. We wanted to start everything as we're transitioning to this next phase of the master plan, but we're really going to be working on it for the next year. And it's not something that we're wanting to work on now and figure out now, it's something we're kind of work through as we work through the master plan. Nina?
I have a question. Maybe you just said it, and I wasn't listening, I was maybe reading. You talk about these as three separate policies. Will these be part of the Master Mobility Plan, or are they going to remain separate?
They will remain separate. So they're separate policies that will be consistent with the Mobility and Master Plan, but they are separate from the master plan itself. So our complete streets policy. The easiest way I wanted to describe what the complete streets policy is, was take some language from this national organization called Smart Growth America. They rate complete streets policies throughout the nation and rank them, and provide guidance on how to improve the policy. And what the policy does is it gives, it tells staff to routinely design and operate the entire right-of-way to be able to provide access for all users. And that is kind of the broadest definition of the term of what the complete streets policy does for us. More specifically, it is more contact sensitive. So it's not to go every street and say we need to provide sidewalk bike lanes, and travel lanes, and bus lanes on every corridor. It is, we need to look at each corridor uniquely and think about what makes sense for our transportation system. The idea with a good policy is that it improves equity, safety, and public health, and that for every jurisdiction, it's going to be different. So every city has a complete, most cities in Washington State have complete streets policies, they all use different language saying the same thing. This is our complete streets policy. It's this one sentence. In comparison, the city of Bellevue has probably, I think it was five or six pages of a complete streets policy with multiple exceptions, more guidance on what goals we want to accomplish, more specifics of methodologies they want to use to achieve those goals, and the different aspects of complete streets, and more guidance to staff of how to use the policy itself as well. Part of the reason why we wanted to update, and then Sheldon, if you can kind of describe a little bit of the history of how the city has used the policy?
So Title 12.10, the complete streets policy, it was developed because back in 2007, '08, we were seeing some facilities being constructed without accommodating the bicycles and pedestrian facilities. And so while a basic complete streets policy focused on those two facilities, the council from that point forward created a line item in the budget annually called Complete Streets, which that just identified that we were to focus on non-motorized type of facilities, and gave the administration a certain amount of money annually to try and do some relatively inexpensive improvements to those two modes of mobility. Complete Streets is really a policy, it's a philosophy, it's not really a line item in a budget. So we're trying to get away from the budgetary term, Complete Streets, and focus in more on a more global look at how we spend that money towards all users. And so what this is, is this is really an update to a very basic rudimentary policy that, as Stephen alluded to, with the national organization, to focus on all users of the right-of-way, not just bikes and peds. So it would include transit and other elements of traffic mobility as well.
Well, first of all, does anyone have a question about this? Kobe, why don't you go ahead?
Did you say that the organization rates cities? Do you happen to know what the rating is for our city?
Our ranking was 23.8 out of 100.
Not great.
And most of the points that we got was for the exceptions that I didn't include on here, which is basically exceptions to the rules, situations where this wouldn't apply.
Okay, thank you.
Emma?
Do you know when that was taken into account, and if it has been reevaluated since?
They do an evaluation every two years. The ranking that I saw was from 2016. In 2018, they did a ranking, but I couldn't find our ranking. They only listed the top 10.
I have a question and a comment. First comment was something that you just said, the exceptions. We spend a few more words on exceptions than we do on the policy, if you're talking about this substance. Sheldon, to your comment about budgeting, does the complete streets policy impact the obligation of developers to include these things, or is it always a city budget burden to fulfill the policy's objectives?
No. The developer is responsible to also build in accordance with the city's policies. It doesn't fall to the city to do what the developer is responsible to do.
Is the budget then for retrofit, or fixing older roads that are not having new development on them to bring them up to grade, or what is the budget part for?
Historically, the budget has been used for, you know, small projects, like there's a missing link in the sidewalk, or there's a crossing that needs to be improved. They're mobility-focused. We've also done some restriping of roadways to narrow up lanes, provide for bike lanes, things like that that are relatively inexpensive. That's what the city's been doing with its money. And with the creation of the ADA Transitional Plan and so forth, now that money is also being used towards that element of mobility, because that's an extremely important piece that, you know, we've been missing over the years. So there's a number of things that are transitioning us away from calling it complete streets in the budget to a more holistic viewpoint.
Thank you. That's all I have. Anything else from you guys? Go ahead. Stephen, back to you.
And then as I'm walking through each of these policies, if you have feedback on what you would like it to look like, I know this is all very much new, and we'll ask that question again, but if you have anything, we are accepting that now, too, because that'll help us as we're talking about the policies and kind of drafting them, to kind of have that in mind as we're looking through this.
Well, let's pause for a moment, then, and look around and see if, as you read about the complete streets policy, did you already think, were you inspired, or did some desire well up in you to have something different? Cynthia?
You mean this policy?
This policy? Do you have any feedback for them?
Well, I'm assuming that we're being introduced to the idea of updating this policy, and that we'll be walking through what that looks like. So I was kind of holding my comments on the content, but I was sort of waiting.
This is it, though, right?
This is the current policy right now. This is what's getting updated.
And are we going to get some? I was waiting until I heard everything you had to say before, because I'm assuming that some groundwork is being laid for what it should be looking like, and then I was going to pull off. Because, of course, I have lots of opinions about this, but I was kind of waiting to see whether you were going to introduce where it is heading before I commented.
Do you have anything more to say about?
We're at a blank slate at this point.
We're at a blank slate right now.
Oh. The door's open.
Yeah.
I have lots of comments.
Would you like to go first? Go ahead.
So I have a couple of things. One is, I mean, I think this is a great start, honestly, because non-motorized is primarily bikes and peds, and it's great to even, you know, make that statement. Obviously, it's a bit thin and not very specific, but a couple things. I mean, Sheldon, you mentioned adding transit, obviously, really making sure we're beating our brains and to make sure we understand, you know, all the different modes that we need to be considering practically. The other thing is that bikes have always been a much more of a mixed bag than they always appear in a policy. There's people riding fast, there's people riding slow, there's people learning to ride their bike, there's people riding to school or not riding to school. And I think it's even more complicated with, and there's really, really big safety implications for whether somebody's using a sidewalk or somebody's using a bike lane. And with e-bikes, it's also changing. So you might have somebody going as fast as an experienced cyclist, but they don't have the confidence they might be using the sidewalks, and that creates a tremendous safety issue with how you enter a crosswalk. So I just want to make sure that when we expand, like who we mean, that we need them to be complete for, that we're understanding all the different dynamics. So that's really important. The other thing is, and maybe this is elementary, but I know that there was a time in planning theory when complete streets meant a space for everybody, and suddenly it took five minutes to cross a street. And if you've ever driven in, you know, like, oh, some places in California, some of these suburban, I mean, it's, you know, it's a long way. And so I assume that we've learned those lessons, and, you know, you said maybe you narrow a street so you can fit a bike lane, that sort of thing. I'd love to see us pushing that direction where there's more integration and not bigger footprint. I think that's important, to make sure we're up to speed on the latest thinking in that, because there was, I think, a wrong direction that complete streets took, but that maybe, nobody does that anymore. I don't know. If you've ever been to some of those places, it's pretty crazy. So those were just some of the opening comments. And then, yeah, I guess I'm also just sort of wondering what the teeth is in this, because, and then there's other facilities that Issaquah has influence over but doesn't own state, you know, the crossing, yeah, especially the one that I'm particularly interested in, exit 18, which is just a terrible intersection when you're trying to ride your bike or walk across there. So I guess I'm just sort of wondering what it means to be included in the planning. I think we should elaborate on that.
Got all that?
Yeah.
Yeah, very good. Thank you, Cynthia. When you're ready, I'm going to go to Kobe.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I just had a question. What was the other city you mentioned that had like five or six pages dedicated to this?
City of Bellevue.
Do you happen to know off the top of your head what that is? So obviously, this is, I would say, a good start, but I wouldn't say this is comprehensive. I'm assuming the five to six page is a lot more comprehensive.
Yeah.
What else did they include that we didn't include in this?
They specifically designed who all the users are in all the different modes, and so they went very comprehensive in terms of, for bicyclists, these were the different types of users we're trying to consider. For transit, these are the type of users. So they really expanded what the definitions were for everybody that uses the right-of-way.
So when we're talking about updating this plan, are we looking to do something similar to that, where we very comprehensively define everything, get it to like that five or six-page length?
I wouldn't say that we're aiming for the five- to six-page length. Like I said before, each policy is unique to each city, and we're not And we're not improving this to get a better ranking. We're improving this to make it more useful for us, to get to better achieve a lot of what we're trying to do in the Mobility Master Plan. And so it might be five to six pages, but it might just be two to three pages. It might be two pages. So it really comes down to, does it really meet what we, the staff and the Transitrations Advisory Board, are comfortable with of what a complete streets policy will do for us? Does that answer your question? Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else besides me? Thank you, Cynthia, for your comments, plus one on those and you and about the multiple users and the different kinds and to consider them. But I had also been thinking about the word "should" in here, which is easy to not enforce. If it doesn't seem that important, why you just say "should"? I think it's more important than that. And then we spend a lot of time talking about the exceptions, about when you're not going to do it. But we never talk about, or I don't see where you are going to do it. When are you going to do it? And that's kind of my question about development. If, I don't see something here that says that when a certain amount of redevelopment happens near a transportation corridor, then something must be upgraded. Maybe that's somewhere else. But some sort of language that triggers when this sort of thing is going to happen would be nice.
Okay.
Anything else on complete streets from you guys? No?
Yes, Stephanie. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, yeah, I didn't see it. Stephanie? I just have a question to clarify. Are we focusing this on main arterials and anything going, you know, up to maybe residential streets where, you know, aside from cul-de-sacs? Or are we just looking at every street that could be impacted in the city?
It'll be, it'll be every street impacted in the city. So our full transportation network. Though, how we will look at residential streets is probably going to be different, how we'll look at the different levels of arterials.
And is it important for us to call that out in, when we're stating this? You know, that, you know, main arterials are obviously going to be a focus for every possible option for transportation versus residential? We're thinking a little bit more along, you know, do we have to worry about kids getting to school on a bike? Or, you know, less vehicles, but other modes of transportation being used more often?
To answer both your questions, Nina, or kind of to respond to your comment and answer that question, having more language specific to that, how we're going to, how we, the goals we want to handle each of the different types of streets helps with having that teeth for development review, but also staff review of each of the corridors.
Anything else, Stephanie?
No, thank you.
And Cynthia have something else? Pretty good? We're all good. Thank you.
Great feedback, thank you. Onto the next policy. So that we have, the city has crossing guidelines that were adopted back in 2008 that define all of, define all of our policies related to crossings. So specifically where crossings go, whether we mark them with crosswalks, what type of treatments we add to those crosswalks, what do we do with controlled versus uncontrolled locations? And I'll talk a little bit more about what all of that it means. And then also what our design standards and development review standards are related to the crossings. And so that's where we have a little more teeth on where crossings go and what goes in. But being that this was adopted 10 years ago, our standards are a little behind. And so we want to update a lot of those standards. You know, it's a lot more technical than policy. But we are actually having those discussions of the policies to be more specific on where crossings will go, what type of crossings will go, and how frequent. One thing to note with all crossings and a lot of how we control the roadway, we have to follow federal standards. And the federal standards that we, that specific to this is in the Manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices, MUTCD for short. So if you ever hear that term, this is what the transportation engineer or planner is referring to. And that is specific standards and guidelines on signage, on road markings, so all the striping you see on the roadways, any paint that you see on the roadway, and signals. So whether it's the traffic signals at intersections or those rapid flashing beacons that you see at the crosswalks, this, these federal standards or guidelines govern how all that gets installed. But where it's a little more looser is when and how often they get installed. And that is more up to the local jurisdictions to establish those type of policies. Yeah, please.
How these crossings are applied or not. And so it's important for the public to be able to have an expectation of, oh, we have this condition. We can expect this to be installed. It also helps from the driver's perspective. You know, they see consistency along the roadway network. So they understand, hey, I can expect to see these types of devices and I have to act a certain way. Predictability and the like is important for all people's safety, so.
So a lot of the, that types of crossings you'll see can be broken down to two different categories of uncontrolled crossing, where there's no markings and no signage on the roadway. That's typically what you'll see in residential neighborhoods with unmarked crossings. And then also where there is a marked crosswalk, it's also not controlled if you're not, it's, if you're not forcing, requiring a driver to stop, it is an uncontrolled crosswalk or intersection. Where it is controlled is where you have a stop sign or a signal actually requiring drivers to stop. And that is the biggest distinguish, yes?
Yeah, let me ask about this and see if I remember my lessons from Issaquah Highlands. But aren't drivers required to stop for pedestrians who are waiting even at an uncontrolled crossing? Is there driver law that tells them to do that?
Do we have a local law?
There is a state law that says that once a pedestrian steps off the curb and enters the crosswalk, the driver is supposed to stop. There's some caveats to that because the driver, the person isn't supposed to jump out right in front of the car as it's right there and doesn't give the driver an opportunity to stop. But yes, for all practical purposes, even there, but it's still, as Stephen said, there are controlled and uncontrolled. If the pedestrian approaches a controlled crossing, they can push a button and the lights will change and the driver should stop. If they are on a different type of crossing where it doesn't have any devices, that creates a red ball for the driver. They can still step off the curb and the driver's supposed to be able to stop, but it's not controlled.
Thank you.
And that's, I, one of the biggest reasons to bring this up is that those crosswalks where there's rapid flashing beacons, that actually is not requiring drivers to stop. That is a warning signal to drivers, signaling that a pedestrian is there wanting to cross that crosswalk. And people think that that signal is actually requiring drivers and it's the opposite. It's more of a warning signal more so than anything else. For it to be controlled, requiring drivers to stop, it has to be either a traffic signal or this, what's called a HAWK signal, which is not necessarily an intersection with traffic signals. But it is, it is a signal giving drivers, requiring drivers to stop at the stop line. And then there's also stop signs, which also require drivers to stop at the intersection. And a lot of the special treatments that we'll discuss in these crossing guidelines are on here, but also, what I also couldn't fit on here, a lot of the different treatments you show to either give warnings to drivers that this is a crossing, whether for bicyclists or pedestrians, but also to provide different treatments for pedestrians. So in the upper right, you have an island that it becomes a two-stage crossing where a pedestrian or someone who is crossing is able to stop in the middle and take a break, depending on the volume of the traffic on the roadway. That's actually could be very important. The bottom left is raised crossing. That's important because that is actually lifting up the vehicles like a speed hump, almost forcing them to slow down for the intersection. And then the bottom right is that rapid flashing beacon that I brought up. Are there any questions on the different type of treatments? Stephanie?
At this point, does the city tend to choose one over the other? Or is it all specific to that crossing point?
Every, every crossing is unique. A lot of these, there's guidance on when to use a lot of these, but there's not requirements on how to use them or when to use them. And so that is, that is part of the policy discussion we'll have is, well, do we actually want to require in specific situations to require a rapid flashing beacon crosswalk? Or to put in just policy saying we need to consider either rapid flashing beacon or another type of treatment in certain situations?
I guess the, my big question is, how much does the profession collectively know about the effectiveness of all these different treatments? I mean, obviously, every intersection is unique. But is there a lot of data? Is there a lot of agreement about certain treatments and practices? I mean, is it, is it current? Is it robust? Is there enough of it? Because I think some of the times, these things can be counterintuitive. You know, you take traffic circles, for example. People complain about them, but there's a lot of data that show that they can reduce, you know, they can speed up traffic and they can reduce collision. So people can complain about them, but they work. Like, so how much, because I think this is one of those things where I'm not sure how much I trust intuition and I really trust data if it should be trusted. And I'm curious about the sort of the state of the profession and how much we know about whether these things work, whether it's safety or promoting a sense of safety which encourages more participation or more usage, that sort of thing. How much do we know?
There is data on most of these devices, all of these devices. Otherwise, they wouldn't be supported for either experimentation or approval in the federal standards or federal guidelines. But we always are looking for more data. Probably the newest of these treatments is going to be the rapid flashing beacons in the bottom right and their effectiveness of compliance of drivers actually stopping and yielding for people crossing, but also for compliance for pedestrians using them. So one thing that I've seen in some cities is, in situations where you have these rapid flashing beacons, the drivers become accustomed to seeing them. And they look for the lights, not for the pedestrians. And so if the pedestrian doesn't actually trigger the signal, the driver doesn't, isn't expecting to cross. And so you have, you have to consider both situations of, well, you can't just put rapid flashing beacons in every location. You really want it in specific locations where there's high-volume vehicles, more so than high-volume pedestrians. Because there's also the expectation of driver behavior that you have to take into account.
I would just encourage us to always be asking for objective information rather than just, it's so tempting, like, oh, I like that one. And can you tell us a little bit about the one in the top row in the middle? I've never seen anything like that before.
It's, so it's just a special crosswalk. So it's incorporating art as part of a crosswalk. And it's, it's been of a debate on the federal level on its compliance or, no, compliance, its legality and how much they want to allow that. So in like City of Seattle, you'll see piano keys as part of the crosswalk or you'll see, I can't remember the other art installations they have, but you'll see different types of crosswalks over in the City of Seattle. And then even City of Boston, they have different types of ones relating to art, whether it's historical art relating to something in the close proximity or if the neighborhood has something as part of its history that they want to incorporate as part of the restriping. But there are requirements on the federal level that you still need to abide by. For instance, when you have a specific crosswalk that has like the solid bars, you can't impede those solid white bars in any way. So the art actually has to work around it than actually cover it. And that is what's been, been decided to be allowed as part of the federal guidance. That was probably more than what your question was, but. Were there, I saw a name.
I have a question unless I want to wait and see if interview anybody. I have one question about these. And I think I heard you say that in our policies, we don't have any minimum or requirements that say when you have to use any of these? There's no standard or bar that says when this, then you got to do that?
We, go ahead, Sheldon.
You're correct. There's no thou shall use this type of device in these conditions and so forth. What we have is adopted guidelines so that we are able to look at the most current literature and research. We are able to use some engineering judgment where you look at it as, the guidelines may give you some approximations as to when you use it, volumes of traffic, speed of traffic, volumes of pedestrians. There's a multitude of different things that go into the guidelines. And there's always the engineering judgment of, you know, is this a place where, does it meet driver expectation? You know, are the pedestrians really going to, you know, there's a whole lot of things that go into, do you use a device at a certain location or not? Hopefully, the update of the guidelines will get us closer to the thou shall. But again, you want to be able to provide for opportunity to use latest data and things like that. Because Ms. Crass's comment about, you know, just saying, well, it feels good to put it in over here. That's one of the issues that we have today is that a lot of people, engineers included, will say, oh, we should do this here. It's like, what do you mean? You know, it's just like, it doesn't meet any criteria, you know? And so those conversations are almost daily, you know, in the industry. And so in updating these guidelines is very important. And some input and guidance from the tab on these sorts of things is going to be important.
Yeah, I think that opportunities where, not to paint a broad brush, but where you could install a shall so that you have that, okay, this is one of those things that's very important. I'm not saying when or where that is. But it would be nice to determine that there are some places where it's very important to do something.
Like the mid-block crossing on I-90?
I was actually going to ask about the mid-block crossing because it inspired me to ask about another jurisdiction. When you have such policies, how would they apply to something like SR-900?
The portion of SR-900 that is under the city's control is south of Newport Way. That is a state highway that because of our population, we would then be able to apply them. Anything that is Newport, basically north of Tibbetts Creek to all the way through to 12th Avenue signal is in the I-90 limited access and controlled by FHWA and WashDOT. So we would have no influence on that. We can try and influence them and have those conversations. But technically, it is their operational facility and we don't control it.
Thank you for that. Anything else about special crossings before we move on?
Any feedback on what you would like to see? Whether it's treatments you've seen in other areas or things to, you would like to have us discuss as we're looking through the policies?
I would like to see more of the utensil-type crossings. I really like art, I do. And I think that having something unique would get drivers to slow down especially and kind of look at it more. I think it's a really effective way of mixing art, culture, and safety. So I would prefer to see more of those type of crossings in our city.
Okay.
I would just like to-
I would just like to make sure that we focus on continuity, and I'm sure you're already doing this, but you know, that figure that you said of 25% was our rating. And I kept thinking about, I wonder what it would be if you, you know, were able to segment that by neighborhood. I mean, we should be, we should, I think we should, I don't know how exactly to apply this equitably, but let's invest where there's already, let's say, topographical or land use reasons that people might be using these facilities. It just seems if it gets, if you're sort of a mile wide and an inch deep and just sort of do a mediocre job everywhere, that you won't be protecting your investment versus rolling it out or really focusing or making the shals more strict where we know that there's, like I said, topographical and other land use features that are going to encourage, that are more naturally going to be used by non-motorized. I don't know, I just want to make sure we do well where we do it and not just peanut butter spread across the whole thing.
Yeah. And that's sort of what I was thinking about where we have opportunities with the Central Isaguac Plan or the Urban Center, Urban Growth Center to have more shals, maybe more shals in places like Old Town, places that are very, Old Town is already pedestrian-heavy. We hope that the Urban Growth Center will be a pedestrian place and to lay that investment in the real dense core of it. Maybe those geographical definitions allow for places where we could be stricter as an idea. And another zone that I think could be added to that, it might already be in the Urban Growth Center as anything that's bordering the state park or major trailheads as other heavily pedestrian or other users or crossings.
Yeah, trail crossings, connections with parks, already been identified as staff as major policy discussions or points that we'll have as part of this update.
Right. Stephanie?
You said briefly that the kind of artistic crossing options are kind of, it's almost gray area with federal. Where does that put us if, you know, if we say, okay, fine, and for trailheads or parks and maybe Old Town or, you know, if we want to incorporate a little bit more art but still use the crossing efficiently? How does that affect that decision-making if it's still kind of gray area with federal?
It's, so when I say gray area is, it's like not all art is being approved as part of the crosswalks. There's very specific guidelines you have to follow, but even those guidelines are changing at the federal level as they, as more and more of these installations go out throughout the country and more data kind of goes behind of what's impacting the sightline and the visualization of these items and being able to actually control traffic. So every installation is going to have, we're just going to have to look at it uniquely and specifically in every situation, but it, I don't think we need to be afraid and not do it and stay away from it. I think we will just need to be able to look at each one closely to make sure that we're not falling out of that gray area and we're staying kind of in the guidelines at the federal level.
Do you think then we should call out maybe specifically if we choose to use something more along that lines that, you know, it's specific to very certain areas or we're using it intentionally, you know, for trailheads or parks or downtown for maybe just wayfinding? That's, we're including the wayfinding in those crossings? I don't know if that's too specific, but maybe that should be a shall in just how we're assuming people are moving around the city or within the bounds that we've created.
Okay.
I should add one more thing to my list and, you know, I said the Urban Growth Center in Old Town and trail crossings and trailheads, but also the urban villages.
Okay. Okay. If there's not anything else, I'll move on. All right. And this won't be the first time we'll be asking this question. Well, as we kind of draft new language, we will come back to the tab of, hey, does this meet what the feedback that you had given us before? And these are the considerations of how we drafted it. So the last policy that we'll talk about tonight is our traffic calming policy. This was a policy that was put together and adopted back in 2003 with seven major objectives, which includes slowing speeds in neighborhoods, reducing collisions, increasing the perception of safety, preference to local residents that live in those neighborhoods, and reduction of need of police enforcement to make it a more intuitive design, enhancing the street environment, and then also increasing access for all mode users through the neighborhoods. It's, you, I think I gave you each a pamphlet with our traffic calming program with each of the two details and the elements of the traffic calming policy. The main thing to note with the traffic calming policy is that there's two defined phases for traffic calming. The first phase includes citizen action requests as well as a traffic analysis, and that could be a process that can take six months to a year. That is the initial stages of figuring out what the issue is and then also going through several steps and evaluating different tools that the city offers on addressing a lot of the issue. And so there's a lot of education and a lot of enforcement that comes out of that first phase. The second phase is where you now do evaluation of the first phase and then you also do traffic, further traffic analysis with speed counts, volume data, and look at whether or not engineered solution is warranted in that situation. And it is only in that second phase where you look at engineered solutions. In that first phase, that is where you are kind of sticking to the education and enforcement portion of the traffic calming policy. Any questions on the process? It's outlined, I think, on the back page, front page of the pamphlet that you have.
If you could go back one slide, I have a question about the objectives.
Sure.
Maybe it's just in the translation, but the third bullet point that says increased perception of safety seems slightly unsatisfying to me. Am I missing something there or is it not really safer? It just seems like it's safer?
No, it was, the full sentence was increase the perception of safety of non-motorized users on the corridor. And that is that the perception of safety is relative to each individual. And that was what that language was getting at, that everybody perceives safety a little bit differently. And that is part of why it was being called out as part of the objectives because engineering standards of what defines or what warrants safety improvements is different than people's perception of what doesn't feel safe. And so that, I think that is why that language was called out as part of the objectives.
Kobe and then Cynthia?
I was just going to ask, how many requests do you usually get every year for this program? If you happen to know.
I'm going to turn to Sheldon to answer that.
I don't have an exact number. We do get a number of citizens that submit requests for, we think, the traffic speeding through our neighborhood, we'd like you to come out and take speed counts, things like that. We do get quite a bit of that. A lot of times, the data comes back and there's engineering standards, as Stephen referred to, of, you know, it's like if 85% of the people are traveling within, you know, five miles per hour above the speed limit, that's really not an issue because you can have anomalies that can drive that up and just the other way around, you could have it to drive it down. And so the, that may be perceived by those people as being a safety issue, but in the world out there, it's really not. That's a normal thing that people drive within five miles per hour of the speed limit. So, but we do get a number of requests and we do investigate each and every one of them.
Okay, thank you.
Is that your question, Cynthia?
No, I was just going to say, I think increasing the perception of safety is really important because people are going to feel more confident engaging and, you know, participating in different modes if they feel safe. And the more people that do it, the safer it's going to become. So I think, I don't think it should be instead of improving safety, but I think that it is a different concept and I think it's a very important one.
Yeah, I think if I saw a bullet point that said that an objective was that it was safer and that people felt safer, that would be more satisfying to me indeed. Any other questions here? I could share here, might be appropriate, that Isaguac Highlands had started process in this, in our neighborhood and have gone through some interesting rounds of evaluation and coming back with the city. It's an ongoing process. It's something that takes a lot of work and it does take a lot of time trying to blend data with people's needs and getting an understanding from the residents what is actually happening and their perceptions and then matching that to what the data says and then figuring out where to go from there. And Old Town is another good example, I think, isn't it? Working on that.
Yes, Old Town is, was another major effort.
Forgetting where I was on it, but I think what I was going to talk about was how, I'm sorry, Kobe, did you have a question?
Yeah, just really quick.
Okay.
So I understand the other two policies, exactly what you wanted us to update. You wanted us to be more comprehensive with the first one, be more specific with the second one. Do you know, is there a specific, something that was specifically that we're trying to update with this one or is it just kind of the whole thing in general?
So with this policy, because of the issues the cities have had using this policy, we're looking to overhaul the whole policy. And that is to revisit the idea of, one, what is the community actually want when it comes to traffic calming or neighborhood safety or neighborhood projects? They're just opening kind of a bigger discussion of, starting on the ground, what does the community want? And then working towards, do we establish a traffic calming program and relook at what this process should be, so what the policy should be related to traffic calming and also update what the different devices are going to be available. Right now, it's because this policy was put together back in 2003, the number of devices is fairly limited. So there have been different, a new number of tools are available to us now when it comes to traffic calming and so that we want to update that aspect of the policy as well.
Thank you.
I'd like to add a little more to that. So there is one major area also that we've had conflicts with the communities over and that's in dealing with the installation of engineering devices like speed humps, chicanes, and other types of tools that are used to slow traffic, divert traffic, keep it going a little bit slower. And that is, is in the current program, it requires 70% of the people in the neighborhood to say, yes, I want that type of facility. That's been a very tough burden to achieve. And so there's been a lot of internal, I shouldn't say internal, but conversation within the neighborhoods where we've engaged and it's been mixed, very, very difficult to get 70%. So that's one of the major policy arenas that we'd like to focus in on there. You know, is it something less? Is 70% good? When these guidelines were adopted, most of our adjoining agencies and so forth were using the 70% mark. And so to me, that's a solid conversation to have, you know, are we at the right place? Should it be something less? Because we don't want it to be so burdensome that the answer's always no, but yet we also want to have it so that after the devices go in, we don't get half the neighborhood coming back going, hey, can you take it out now? Because these things cost money and some of them are really noisy. You know, there's a number of different reasons why we want to have this, you know, policy looked at.
Thank you.
Were there any questions before? So one of the, actually Sheldon, maybe you could talk a little more on the history of how this policy has been used and what's changed more recently to lead us to really want to overhaul the policy?
Well, the policy, you know, we have gone through the different phases when we get a request for, if there's a speeding problem or people just call us and say, hey, I want speed humps. We'll go through the data collection, analyze it, work with the neighborhood. And the policy that I just referenced about getting 70% to buy into a type of device, that's been where it's been so burdensome that the answer's pretty much been no all the time. We do have certain streets in the city that the policy is clear that we cannot install these devices, like up on Squawk Mountain, you know, on the steeper hills because we just talked about snow plowing, fire trucks. There's a number of reasons why we don't want them on the steeper hills. But what we did recently, in the past three to five years and working with the Old Town area, is we actually piloted a program. We went, the city went ahead and purchased some temporary speed humps. We built some temporary little traffic circles. We did a number of different things so that the community could try it out rather than saying, well, we need 70% to say, this is what you want. We experimented. That pilot program took us about a year and a half and a little bit over $300,000. But hopefully, that'll help inform us and maybe that's a policy going forward is that when you have a large area, we do a pilot program rather than saying, you have to have X percent. There's a number of different alternatives that can be discussed and, you know, advice given from the tab on what's the best way to approach these things. Hopefully, that answered the question.
Stephanie?
Just speaking from experience with that pilot program, I live on Second and Andrews and so I saw like 10 different options or maybe eight different options put on three different blocks. And just living there as a part of the community, it was great because I could go try them all out within a mile of my house and decide what I honestly thought would be safest for, especially, you know, high school kids trying to cut through my neighborhood or, you know, my next-door neighbors that's 75 years old that maybe wants to walk half the time and try and drive the other half. Can they see what movement is? So I think that is definitely something that we should seriously consider. Granted, it costs a little bit more money in the front end of things, but I think it might spike community involvement if, you know, they're forced to try two or three different options on two blocks just for, I forget how long it was, maybe eight weeks, six weeks. It wasn't very long. But I think that's something just from experience and seeing it would be definitely worth something putting down on paper.
Okay.
Anybody else about that? I have one question, still looking around. Sheldon, I wanted to ask about police enforcement as part of this and then I wanted to ask about speeds as Isaguac urbanizes and densifies. We've had 25 mile an hour roads everywhere, which means, as per what you just said, you can go 30, which wouldn't be appropriate as we get more and more dense. Can we put the city look into lower speed limits, which I know then speaks to the enforcement thing? What about, what about speeds?
There are some RCWs that limit how far you can reduce the speeds. I believe there's only limited circumstances where the RCWs would allow a municipality to go down to 20 mile per hour, but I don't have those right off the top of my head. Pretty much, it's 25 mile per hour is the minimum speed that a municipality can set unless there's extenuating circumstances. And I believe those are tip, don't quote me as being all-inclusive here, but I believe those are mostly focused on narrow alleyways, not on the normal streets.
And one thing to consider, I'll add on to Sheldon's answers, is one thing to consider about speed reduction is also driver compliance. So you can reduce, you can change the signs and reduce the speeds to 20. Let's say legislation is there, allows us to change it. You still need drivers to follow it. And so you still have that balance of, well, you have to actually have the engineering infrastructure built to intuitively force drivers to drive that speed. And so if drivers are going beyond the speed limit, it's only because the roadway has been engineered that way, allowing them to feel comfortable to go that speed. And so that is part of the consideration. So it's not enough to just lower the speed limit. You also have to put in some engineering solutions to support it as well.
Yeah, I can see how that would go hand in hand. One without the other, though, I would say as an Isaguac Highlander, the One without the other, though, I would say, as an Issaquah Highlander, the, we have a lot of traffic calming in our design, street parking, narrow streets, all these sorts of things, and still people will drive fast. And so they seem to not work on their own, or still needs to be something else, kind of my point.
Mm-hmm. Also, what I was going to talk about next was the different type of devices that are available that we haven't really explored in the city of Issaquah. And, I mean, the upper left being speed humps, the basic ones that you will see in most toolboxes. But the upper middle one being called street murals. And it's more of a community process, as part of the education process, you can bring a community together and put in street murals in your neighborhood. And it doesn't necessarily force people to slow down, but when you, there are, there is data behind that, when you actually get communities together to get to know one another, to help put together this piece of art on the mural, the speeds actually drop. You see a reduction in volume and speeds in this, because it now becomes a part of the neighborhood. It is established part of its own history in each of the neighborhoods, and so you see actually an impact on driver behavior. And so there's things like that, that we can also consider as part of the policy. Traffic circles being another one that you're familiar with. Speed cushions, something that emerging services actually prefers, because they're able to drive through, does show similar reductions in speed as speed humps, but not as much, because drivers still feel comfortable to, you know, drive one wheel during, in one of the gaps, and, but only hit other wheel on the actual hump. And that's the lower left one. And then you have partial and full closures that you can also consider as part of traffic calming that force driver behavior to change around how they get through or around a neighborhood. And that is also some things that you can consider, but it isn't necessarily addressed in the policy right now. And so those are kind of the main discussion pieces that we'll have with the policy. But we also want to bring up that there's different direction that you can bring the policy or our program, if that's what we establish later on, is, right now, what we have is more of a reactive system. You wait for a complaint to come in, and wait for issues to come in before you actually establish an engineered solution. You can actually incorporate certain aspects and street standards to require new development to put in certain engineered solutions. Or you actually go out with, you do your own traffic counts, not wait for complaints to come in, and you just gauge the neighborhood streets throughout the city on probably different waves, not all at the same time. But you can actually do check, your own checking, and then talk, you know, propose a solution or propose engineered solution to go into a neighborhood, even though a complaint didn't come in. So you can go more proactively with a traffic calming program or some type of policy as well. So that's, that'll be part of the discussions that we'll have with this update. Is there anything that you would like us to consider?
You want me to start? I'll look again for you. So I want to, I have a couple comments. One is, reflecting on the very last thing you said about new development, adjacent transportation facilities, you know, that's very logical, but I'm trying still to get my head around simplified concurrency, where we have impacts that impact the whole city and how we, how that works. Sheldon, do you know what I'm asking about? When we have developers paying impact fees that might support improvements that are not right next door to their property. How does simplified concurrency change how we look at installing facilities? Or does it? Do I misunderstand, do I not understand that at all?
The traffic impact fees are not connected to the traffic calming aspects of what Stephen's talking about.
Funded, anyway.
No.
Okay, thank you. That's a great answer. Okay, and then my next thing has to do with bicycle safety. And simple, anytime that there is hardscape, infrastructure in the path of the street kind of bike riding, not the sidewalk kind of bike riding, but to Cynthia's point, people who are traveling at a reasonable speed, it's dangerous. And sometimes we use traffic calming devices like bull bouts for crosswalks, and I find them terribly dangerous, especially they often aren't painted or anything. But if even comparing the two left-hand side speed humps, I was just in Victoria, and they had full width speed humps, they were great. They were great. You just went right over them, and it was consistent all the way. When you have the variations in pavement, like the bottom left, as a cyclist, I wouldn't like that. I wouldn't like that at all, especially where it rains. It doesn't rain here at all, but where it rains. Those were, those were a couple things that I was thinking of. Anybody else out here on the board? Stephanie, go ahead.
Just from a practical standpoint, on the street murals, is there information on how long those tend to last before they start to break down and get destroyed?
It depends on the program we put together. So there are cities who, where the city staff puts it in, like the community comes together, puts together the design, works with staff to put it together, and the staff will come in and put in, and it'll last a couple of years. Most programs you'll see is the community puts together the design approved by the city, and then they go buy paint at Home Depot, and then they go paint it on the street. And so what they do is they actually have an annual barbecue every year to repaint it. And that's funded by the city as part of that program, for those cities who have that.
I'm looking at the picture, and I'm just also wondering a little bit, do you get into conflict between sort of overall connectivity and some of these physical barriers? I mean, I just wouldn't want to consider these in a vacuum. Like, I'm just looking at some of the pictures, the middle bottom and the lower right. I just listened to a lot of conversations about people being concerned about, you know, not wanting traffic to go through, but it's important to keep the connectivity throughout the city also, so that people aren't having to drive all around. So I'm just, I guess I'm just wanting to make sure that we consider these as part of the network. And I guess it's kind of to your point about calming being a program, a responsive program versus a more...
Reactive.
Right, right. Reactive versus a planned thing, but I just want to make sure that, thinking about it in the context of the whole network, of the transportation network, that some of these things look like they could be in conflict with those goals.
You're absolutely right. And I think that's a great conversation, as you guys work on the policies that are going to be embedded within the calming guidelines. Because, you know, like you said, the grid is important to the overall capacity of mobility within the city. And some of these alternatives, you know, divert traffic, block traffic, which creates other issues, which could be contrary to the goals of the city and the master mobility plan.
Stephanie, go.
Are we also taking into consideration projects that have already been done? Like, Nana, you brought up the kind of bump outs that could get in the way for cyclists, like we just put all of those in down front street. Are we thinking about affecting projects that are completed now, once we have this plan in place? Like, are we going to go back and say, all right, this doesn't fit what the plan is moving forward, and that has to be adjusted now? Or we don't have to worry about it?
Yeah, we're not, we're not going to try to change everything that's already in place. It's more of either new projects, or if the city designs to redesign a street that has bull bouts, let's say, then maybe they'll, as part of that conversation, they'll talk about either taking out the bull bouts or redesigning them somehow. But no, the intention of this is not to go and just change everything. It's more to establish more of a consistent process for the city to follow that. Everybody understands, if we want a project to go in, this is the process we need to go by, and everybody's, everybody, there's consensus around how to do that. Anything else?
That might be it from us.
Okay. That's it from me. So as, as we're working through the timeline for this, it is over the next year, but, so the next time you'll probably hear from me is, in the next, or hear from me on this, is the next probably two to three months, when I'll probably have a proposal or draft language for the complete streets policy. And then after that, we'll talk about the next policy. I'm not, I'm trying not to give you too much, because as we work into the next phase of mobility master plan, you'll get multiple items that we'll be discussing and have draft proposal language for, for us to consider. So this will be stretched out over the next year. Yes?
So to that, may I ask, tonight, our agenda, if somebody were just reading our agenda, they would, could see in the packet that we were talking about these policies, but when we're soliciting some more public comment, and now that we've had this put on tape, and those people who are interested in it can access it on ICTV, when it comes back to us, it's still going to come back in a draft form, right? And we will be welcoming public comment and our comment on it.
Yes.
Right? So it'll be great to make it very explicit, so that people will be triggered to know, to come in and with their thoughts at that time, and to study the packet.
Okay, yep, we can do that.
Maybe some subheadings in the agenda.
Yep, we can do that.
Yeah. Any other thoughts on scheduling, or, am I meant that way? No? Okay, what else?
That's it.
That's it from you?
That's it from me.
Okay. We would have a staff report, but maybe that was the staff report. Want to check with you and see if you have anything else to say in a staff report?
No, not, nothing from me.
Sheldon, do you have something more to contribute, that way?
I have a minor update. The State Department of Transportation opened the bids for the I-90 auxiliary lane project, which includes the retaining wall to widen Northwest Semamish Road. The bids came in very good, under what the engineer's estimate was, and so the Northwest Region Office has recommended awarding the contract. So looks like that project is a go. So my guess is, is probably third quarter this year, we might start to see a contractor mobilizing. I don't know what the contractor schedule is yet, because there had only been a contract yet, but I think that's a good piece of information for the people to know.
Could you quickly say what and where, really quick, on that project?
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. The I-90 auxiliary lane project provides for hardening of the shoulders between SR-900 and East Gate, in east and west direction, that will allow traffic to use the shoulders as a general purpose lane. But it also includes the construction of sound walls between Lakemont and about halfway towards SR-900, on either side of I-90 as well, and then some sound walls in Bellevue also. So the idea is to get traffic to be able to merge easier, keep traffic flowing, and move the traffic east and westbound, because that's a congestion point on I-90.
Are the, yeah, are the auxiliary lanes for just certain times of the day?
No. 24/7.
Stephanie?
Is that the Lakemont exit is where it starts, and then goes back towards Issaquah on I-90?
That's the portion inside the city of Issaquah. It actually continues through Bellevue all the way to East Gate. And they're doing some improvements at the East Gate interchange for traffic entering, heading west, eastbound, as well as they're creating some opportunity for an extra auxiliary lane as you approach the 148th, 156th exit. And that's about where it stops, right there at that interchange.
Great. Thank you. Any more staff report? No. The chair doesn't have a report. Is there a youth report this evening, Kobe?
Yeah, just a little minor thing. So as part of the plan to get community feedback on the master mobility plan, which I believe Stephen talked about a little bit with the community engagement slide on there, we're going to target Issaquah High School. So we have a survey just, that we're doing this week, and probably part of next week too, just getting some youth feedback on the master mobility plan. And also, I believe next week Stephen's coming, we're not sure what date, just coming into the school, or a focus group to get more detailed, more detailed feedback.
Excellent. Thank you. Under other business announcements, does anybody have anything else? I would just say that tomorrow is our Bellevue tour, which will be very interesting, and several of the board members are going on that, to learn about some of the elements in their work. We have a bicycle tour, and I'm sure it'll be as informative as it was in Redmond, which is very helpful. So thank you for putting those together. Anything else? Anything else from you, Stephen? Okay, oh, you know what? I don't have the date of our next meeting handy for me. Do you have that, so we can announce that to our audience?
It'll be June, look at my handy calendar, June 24th is our next meeting.
June 24th here in Council Chambers?
Six o'clock, Council Chambers.
Is this our default room?
Okay. So we're going back to a Monday?
Yes.
This meeting was on a Wednesday, because there was a holiday on a Monday, and then a conflict on the Tuesday. So the next meeting for the Transportation Advisory Board will be Monday, June 24th at 6:00 PM here in Council Chambers. And if you're unable to attend, we would love to have you attend, because we always have opportunities for public comment. But you can also watch it on ICTV or on the YouTube channel for Issaquah. And with that, I will adjourn this meeting at 7:34. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay.